Ready to go?
Did you get into the iPad, okay?
Yeah.
All right. We'll call the order, the June 21st meeting of the city council. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution of America.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Schar had previously indicated he would be absent this evening.
All righty. Correction, approval of the minutes from June 7th, we have a motion to approve.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And correspondence, please, you want to start us?
I've got nothing.
Nothing? Next.
I had a contact with a resident over cemetery and it seems to have kind of resolved itself.
And it, I actually had some on the table, Berto's Beach Ordinance, and I did get a letter from the Rock Lake Committee, other than that, pretty quiet.
No, I don't have anything.
Diane?
Yeah, I have two, one asking about where things stood at Berto's Beach and the vending, and the other was regarding the, an issue on Rock Lake with two residents who are having a dispute.
On a pier.
And both of those, I told them what I knew and so forth.
All righty. Questions in public comment? Would you read that, please?
The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda unless the item is the subject of a public hearing. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided.
Anyone want to address? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. City managers report, Steve?
The first item is the letter from the Sandy Beach Association, and you'll note that one of the, part of the letter asks about the lease at Sandy Beach, and if the council intends to change or stick with the status quo. The next one is the memo on impact fees. Normally at this meeting, we would adjust impact fees. The inflation rate was so low that we recommended that a couple pennies it would add wasn't worth all the paper.
Okay.
So unless you guys have something you want to change, we're going to go that route. There's the notice on the public hearing for the air pollution control permit at Fiber Dome. There's the Jefferson County Economic Development Board's transition plan for the vacancies in that organization. There's a memo that Kathy Pullman, financial assistant, utility bookkeeper, is retired. And then the police department's monthly report, and I wanted to note that on July 19th, they attended the Jefferson County Law Enforcement Memorial. And then on the 31st, they attended the Jefferson County Heroin MOU signing. I wanted to make sure you noted those. Other than that, I don't have anything else unless you have any questions.
I just have regarding the air pollution control permit for...
Fiber Dome?
Yeah. I just wanted, would you mention the time and date for that so people, if they're interested, can go? It's on mine, it says July 28th at 10 o'clock at the public library.
Right. That's it.
So that, there will be notices in the paper, I believe?
Yes.
And on the website, but some people don't have access to those. So Thursday, July 28th at 10 o'clock at the public library.
Anything else for Steve? All right, we'll move on, put the minutes from the public works board, March 8th, 2016, and their work session and meeting for May 10th, 2016 will be recorded. Council business, tavern operators licenses, we have seven. If there's no objection, I'd like to put three of them in a group, Chris Walter, Daniel Drescher, and Christina Bennett. We have a motion to grant license to those three.
So move.
And is there a second?
Would you repeat which three?
Chris Walter, Daniel Drescher.
Okay.
Christina Bennett.
Christina Bennett, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on those three? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Tavern operator for Cory Miller, does anyone want to make a motion on Cory?
I'll make a motion to approve Cory Miller's tavern operator's license.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And Amanda Whipple, a motion on Amanda. Hearing no motion, no.
Do we, should we, can we do the motion to deny based on Wisconsin State Statutes 125.04, 5B still? Does that still fit under that?
Yeah, that would still fit if that's what you choose to do.
Yeah. I think I'd like to make the motion, motion that we deny it.
I'll second.
Based on the Wisconsin statute, 125.04, sub 5B.
And just to clarify what that is, is basically that the applicant doesn't meet the requirements for the license.
Right.
Further discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Can I move to approve the license for Rebecca Schumacher?
Sure, that's the next one. Rebecca Schumacher, we have a motion to approve, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Nay.
Mrs., Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion, motion passed three one.
All right, and last but not least, we have a motion on Nicholas Burrows.
I'll make a motion to approve Nicholas Burrows.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Who's the one we did just before this? Sorry, I need to look through them again real quick. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Nay.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed three one.
All right, now we're done with that part. Now comes the fun, presentation of 2015 financial statements. Here we go.
Thanks for having me here tonight. I promise this will be relatively short and sweet, hopefully.
Good deal.
I am going to present briefly the financials for this year. Looking at the condensed financial, that's the short, about eight or 10-page one, I'm assuming you all have copies, either in hard copy or electronically. So, couple of items to note, page two is our independent auditor's report, that's the, basically that's what you pay us for. You, you provide us information, we provide a report based on tests that we do, and in this case, we gave you what I could call a clean opinion. It said everything's in order, it's in compliance with standards and the ones that we have to apply, it's, as you can see, it shows management responsibility, auditor's responsibility, and the opinion. Now, the one that we have in the condensed report is not as complete an opinion as you would find in a full financial statement, but it does indicate that, and it does give the, the main highlights that you did get a clean opinion in the, in the full financial.
Okay.
Couple of things to note on page three, this is the combined balance sheets, and when we say combined, this includes the, the general operations of the, of the city, it includes TIF districts, it includes your utilities. Stuff is generally comparable from year to year, if you look at the numbers regarding cash and investments, down, down a little bit, the cash was, taxes were up a little, due from other funds. This principally is some of the activity that just, that's your tax role for next year, you have a tax agency fund, and those amounts will be due to the general fund in essence, next year, in 2016. One item, I'm, I'm just going to call your attention to two items that are new for this year. Just two lines up from where it says total assets, you'll see it says Wisconsin Retirement System net pension, and then down below that, it's got deferred outflows of resources, Wisconsin Retirement System pension. In the last year, there was a change in, or an addition, I guess, into what we are required to report on your financial statements. What these two numbers represent is the Wisconsin, obviously you, you members of the Wisconsin Retirement System, your employees contribute, the city contributes something, and the good news is, both of these are what's on the asset side, okay? Wisconsin is one of, I think, only three retirement systems in the country that basically have set aside more assets than what they're going to owe in obligations in the future, okay? Now, this is as of a point in time, in this case, it's as of December 31st, 2014, and then we roll those numbers forward, okay? Because they, they have to have actuaries do this calculation, and obviously by the time we issue this report, they would not be able to have the 2015 number, so it's always going to be like a, a year behind, but we do roll forward information, so it gives a pretty good, pretty good idea of where you're at. What this represents, it's not money you guys can go and spend, and ladies, but what it is, is it shows the, the excess of the, your portion of the excess of assets over the liabilities. If we were in Illinois, this would be a big number on the liability side. You know, they're, they're underfunded by eight or 10 billion dollars, okay? Wisconsin WRS is overfunded. Now, again, market performance can change that, next year I could come here and say, hey, it was a bad market for the investments that Wisconsin Retirement System has, and now you are down in a liabilities position. I don't expect that to happen, but that's, you know, that, there was, is a possibility. In a full financial statement, there's a whole lot more information on this, it doesn't make very good reading, but it does give a lot of information as to, and in full financial, in years going forward, we'll be presenting up to 10 years of, of data, when that, when that amount of data is, is available. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention, because you may look and say, hey, jeez, we didn't have that last year, what, what happened? A new reporting requirement. Now, if you flip the page to, page four, you're kind of going side by side, there's a, there's a pie chart on one page, then page four actually has the raw numbers for revenues, generally comparable to last year, exceptions are the electric revenue was up, that was due to a rate increase. Contributions from developers, you'll see is, is up quite a bit, part of that was, includes some TIF for electrical work, and there was less in property sales, if you notice, property sales went from 296 down to 27,000. Last year's number had property sale of when the utility, sold the utility building, the old utility building, to the city. So, that, that, it's a little misleading, it wasn't like you received money from outside sources, it's kind of like from one pocket to the other, but I, there was actually a cash transaction that took place there.
You might need to make clear, Chuck, that what you refer to as the old utility building was the shared DPW building, which Light and Water owned a half of, and, and the streets department owned a half of. We paid for, the Parks Department bought...
The half that you...
Light and Water half when...
Correct.
And so they moved into that. Then we have the old, actual old utility building on Campus Street, which we sold to, they also will get revenue on that this year, as we sold that to a private entity.
I guess my, my experience here only goes back to the first old utility building, not the second one.
Actually, the other one we bought, I think, in 1910, so it was before my time, too.
And then you'll notice, there's, there's always other financing sources on the bottom, that's the long-term debt that's, that's, was taken out in the last, in 2015 for utility and/or the city projects. Principally, you've had a lot of TIF work and, and street improvement stuff. And looking at the agenda, you will have more of that tonight.
Okay.
Okay, turning to page five, this would be the expenditure side of, of things, obviously bringing revenue on one side, then you have expenditures on the other. Items to note here, everything is fairly comparable, if you look at the, like, the electric utility, there was not a big increase in expenses there, but for years, you had been, I shouldn't say for years, but you had had incurred losses, which obviously now you have a, a rate increase, and you're going back to a, a positive margin, if you will. Like I said, other than that, things are somewhat comparable. The capital outlay area, public works, that always really kind of depends on what you happen to be doing in any one particular year. You'll notice it, it went down from last year, but again, if you look at the proceeds, they were less this year than last year. Generally, that, that stuff will follow, sometimes it's a lag because you don't spend it all by the end of the year. And then on page six, it just shows a, your changes in fund balance, that would be the equity from one year to the next, what, what would in theory be left over after you paid all your bills? You'll notice the general fund is up, that's principally unspent, bound, bound proceeds. The enterprise funds, that would be the, the utilities, again, positive increase in the, in the electric utility, sewer's kind of status quo from year to year, as is the water. I understand you're going through the process to, to increase water rates potentially, and that, again, you do want to have a adequate return on your investment, you know, you invest a lot in fixed assets, and to keep those in good working order and make improvements as needed, you, you do need to have positive margins in your, in your charges. Questions?
No, sir.
The one thing I do, do mention also is, if you do have a question, you know, I, I went through this pretty quickly, if you dive into the longer version of the report and you've got questions, certainly follow them through Betsy and she will send it to me and I'll respond as needed.
All right. Questions for Chuck? Who else?
Is there, yeah, I got one question. Do you see any possible upcoming where we could have maybe a weakness in the future because of changing conditions?
What for the future?
We could have a weakness.
Well, there's, there's always a possibility that, you're, you're talking about like from an internal control standpoint, operations in the, in the office or in the, just general operations of the city?
General operations.
There's always a possibility of stuff out there that, that could go undetected, that, that issues that you wouldn't want to have come up could happen. Generally, you've got good segregation of duties, you know, that, which means you've got people handling cash, but you don't also have them doing transactions and keeping the books, and if you have any of that overlap, there's some oversight that someone else reviews the work. So at this point, no, you don't have, you don't have big issues with that.
You can also, an answer?
The one thing he talked about was internal control, and that's in, you have separation of duties, which takes a certain amount of people, which we have four. So a lot of times, you hear about the reduction of employees up here, then that goes down to three, now you have a lot less internal control, because there's a lot more overlap in the duties and when vacations happen and those types of things, so in order to be ca, be able to keep a strong financial position in the audit, we need that type of segregation of duties.
And there's a, there's a happy medium you want to reach, okay? You could, physically, you could separate every single duty, but then it becomes cost prohibitive. So you want to reach a, a good balance where, okay, you have enough segregation, and you can bear the cost of that without going overboard in either one direction or the other, or giving up some controls that, because you can't afford it. So you're, you're in a good, a good level position.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted, wanted to clarify that from, as you see it, we've, we're doing a good job of keeping our electric utility, our sewer utility, and our water utility separate from the general budget and the city general.
Well, yes, and that's, I mean, those are what's, what's really kind of known as business-type activities, okay? They, they're in the business to have a positive increment to a, a profit issue, if you will, so that they are able to reinvest in, in infrastructure and, and that type of thing. Because the rates aren't something that you can just, okay, this month you had less money come in, we're going to raise the rate next month. It's not something that works like that, so you do have to take more of a long-term view with that. You know, rates don't get increased every year, even every other year, you, it's a, it's a, something you really have to study and decide, is it ready for that? Do we actually need it? And then, and the PSC has some recommended return on investment sort of rates that they, they would like to see utilities have, depending on whether it's a water sewer or electric utility.
So is the, this other stuff that we're going to talk about later tonight, we have the reports on here, is that going to end up being added to our general obligation?
Yes.
Debt, okay.
Actually, it, it's divided between revenue bonds and GO bonds.
Okay.
And it, and it, so Jim will go over that for us, but yeah, it adds to it, we pay off a certain amount each year, we add a certain amount each year based on, you know, we've got that schedule planned out, and we, we've done the rate studies, others did a rate study for, an analysis of when we needed to do the rate studies. Last one we did for water, they recommended a 24% rate increase, we agreed that we would divide that up into, in three separate years rather than do it all at once. So those are the types of things we've been looking at and trying to keep up with making sure our utilities are in place. One of the things that we've had to do here recently is do a study of our infrastructure. It's surprising that for a utility that's over 125 years old, the vast majority of the infrastructure was put in in the first 20 years and hasn't been replaced, so we need to keep up our investments, and so there will be some, we might move to the high side of the rates in the next couple of years, but I'm confident that we'll eat that lump and then be able to keep it and bring it down.
And stay under our cap.
Anything else for Chuck?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it much. I'm C, discussion decision, WPPI shared savings, we have motion 16-6-2-1, red, please.
Motion 16-6 dash two dash one, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Lakeland Buick Chevrolet. Be it moved by the city, council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the city council deems it necessary and in the best interest of the city, the shared savings loan program between WPPI and Lake Mills Light and Water extend a loan to the Lakeland Buick Chevrolet for such purposes and upon the terms and conditions herein after set forth, copies of which are attached hereto and made a part hereof is hereby approved. Section two, that the city manager and city clerk are authorized to execute said agreement and to take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said agreement. Section three, that the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this motion to Lakeland Buick Chevrolet 321 Tyrenia Park Road, Lake Mills, Wisconsin 53551. The city council does hereby approve the agreement and authorize the council president to sign the motion.
Do we have a motion to approve 16-6-2-1?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Cory Neely is here tonight, he's the one that puts it together for the utility and WPPI, so if Cory could do his presentation on the package.
Do you need this, or you got it on?
They all have it on their computers.
Do we have to suspend or no?
No, it's part of the...
It's part of the package, all right. Just making sure we don't...
Yeah, so thank you very much for having me tonight, just want to talk a little bit about the, the project itself. The folks from Lakeland Buick Chevrolet contacted me, said that they were looking to do a project, but they didn't have the capital to do it, and I said, you know, the shared savings program we have as part of WPPI, we can, we can help you guys out, hopefully, and so we started looking at the, the numbers, and the numbers actually really add up really well for these folks. They're going to get about a $6,000 incentive from Focus on Energy, and that, that's basically the incentive they'll get on the outdoor LED lights, the indoor LED lights, and the majority of all the lights, I believe, are all, all going to be LED. For those that don't know LEDs, light emitting diodes, and they're the newer technology. We've, we've been really lucky to do a lot of these projects in the past, we've done stuff at Rock Lake Activity Center and Century and the BP, majority of those lights are upgraded, is, majority of those projects are upgrading lighting, so looks like they're going to save about 63,000 kilowatt hours annually, and then save around $9,000 a year in their utility costs. So it's, it's a great project, it'll make them a much stronger car dealership, so. Any questions on the shared savings loan process or anything like that?
I just have a question, now that, you know, this has come to light and so forth. I just have a question now that, you know, this has come to light and so forth. Who do businesses contact, you or Steve, if they're interested in looking at this kind of thing too?
Yeah, they can call the utility and the utility usually passes it on me or they can go to the website, my contact information is on the website as well. But yeah, they can call me, you know, 608-825-1755 if they're interested in getting an audit or, you know, trying to figure out if the project makes sense to go in through this. For a lot of folks that don't have the capital to do some of these projects, it really helps us move forward. In this case, the owner also has another dealership in the Conawalk. And if this project goes over really well, they're actually going to potentially do another project in Conawalk. Conawalk is also a WPPI member community, so they'll probably do another shared savings loan as well.
One thing we should make clear, Corey is Lake Mills Energy Service Representative. WPPI pays him to come out here and be here several times a week. The, so if you contact either the utility or the city, we refer to Corey right away. So if a business is interested in this kind of package, we send them down there. Corey gets them in with Focus on Energy, which is a good state program, and then he puts together anything that the city and WPPI can do.
So you're getting to know Lake Mills pretty well?
Oh, yeah, I've been here about four years. So I get to meet a lot of the large energy users, a lot of the residential customers as well. It's a great community, so.
We're definitely your favorite community, right?
Of the four, you're the best community we've got. This is recorded, so hopefully no one in Stotner, Evans, or Robby will watch it.
So I was reading through your memo, Steve, and like the, really the last full paragraph is talking about the 50-50.
Right, WPPI and the Lake Mills Light and Water Utility assume the risk of repaying. If it doesn't, if it defaults, they assume the risk of whatever default is there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was, that was clearly stated.
Yeah, and so each month they'll pay back a certain amount on the loan. It's broken into 60 months and so we usually try to match the loan amount to at least around that much so that it's usually cash flow positive. A lot of times people will save more energy than, save more money than they'll actually pay in their loan. It's a good project.
Thank you.
We haven't had any issues with all the other ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do the, on our end at the G.I., we do the credit review and there's no real outstanding issues with this, so.
Okay, who else?
Looks like a win-win to me.
Win-win, thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
So you have a motion, second?
I did make a motion.
Yep, call vote, please.
Mr. Kruhkevich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed, 4-0.
All right, on to Resolution 16-2-5. Can we have that one read, please?
Resolution 16-2-5 establishing schedule of assessment for weights and measures. Whereas Section 3-10-11-B of the City of Lake Mills Municipal Code directs the city clerk to annually prepare the weights and measures schedule of assessment for each class of license. Now therefore, be it resolved that the following schedule of annual assessment for 2015-2016 weights and measures shall be effective for the license period of July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016.
Do you have a motion to approve 16-25? So move, a second?
Second.
This is, well, actually, standard housekeeping. Any questions or?
Just a question. The fee amount, is that set by whom?
Basically, we divide up the cost of the, we contract with the state to do this work for us. Basically, they tell us we have to contract somebody and they're available and it's easiest for us to use them. They then break it out as to what the cost per inspection is. And they inspect all these sites and then that's what we bill each one of them is the cost. We don't bill any more unless, we just pass on the cost of inspection.
And the cost just falls into a class based on what they're using, be it scanners or be it pumps or be it whatever. But they're all classified into 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And there's a price associated, I think, with each one.
Okay.
Yeah, not much say over that. Any other questions on that one? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kruhkevich?
Aye.
Motion passed, 4-0.
Resolution 16-2-6, wastewater, can we have that one read, please?
Authorizing the city manager and staff to submit the Lake Mills Wastewater Treatment Plant Compliance Maintenance Annual Report to the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the city of Lake Mills City Council has reviewed and filed the Lake Mills Wastewater Compliance Annual Report dated June 9, 2016, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part hereof. Section two, that the city of, that the city of Lake Mills City Council understands that by passing this resolution, they are committing to any actions required in the compliance maintenance report. Section three, that the city manager is authorized to submit said documents and to take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said action requirements. Section four, that the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this motion and the compliance maintenance annual report to the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Regional Office.
You have a motion to approve 16-2-6? So move, a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one at all?
Well, this was approved by the Public Works Board.
Yes, it was reviewed by the Public Works Board and approved. We scored very high again. We had all As except for one C. The C was on BOD. That's why we've been working on those permits with the industrials. We have actually done very good in getting offsets under control. So we didn't end up with anything that we felt we needed to do differently. So even though it says we agree to do everything, the only thing in here that we're going to do is continue to work out the permits. Last year, we agreed to do the CMOM, which should be, which will be done in August of this year. But otherwise, everything was great.
Further questions, discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kruhkevich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed, 4-0.
On to?
Want to compliment our wastewater treatment staff for the fine job they're doing over there?
Resolution 16-27, ad hoc committee, can we have that one read, please?
Resolution 16-27, establishing, establishing an ad hoc committee to make certain recommendations concerning a community multipurpose facility for the city of Lake Mills. Whereas the city of Lake Mills City Council may provide for this creation of ad hoc committees as may be necessary for the city of Lake Mills. Whereas the city council desires to review and consider options for operating a multipurpose facility. And whereas the city council desires community involvement as the basis for a strong and inclusive future decision on the need for and uses of a multipurpose facility. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills as follows. Section one, ad hoc committee, multipurpose facility, that the city hereby establishes an ad hoc committee to be known as the Multipurpose Facility Committee, which is organized to review the potential community needs and uses for a multipurpose facility and related operations. Section two, rationale, multipurpose facility, that the Multipurpose Facility Committee is charged with preparing a report for the council that makes a recommendation on the need for a multipurpose facility, the uses of the multipurpose facility and the operations of the programs and facility. Schedule, or section three, appointments, that the council president shall present seven names to the council for appointment to the Multipurpose Facility Committee. Council members should recommend potential residents from their district to the council president for appointment. Section four, officers. The Multipurpose Facility Committee shall select a chair and a vice chair from its membership. The chair shall be responsible for overseeing meetings of the committee and the vice chair shall fulfill this duty when the chair is unable to do so. Section five, council liaisons. The council shall elect two council members to serve as liaisons with the Multipurpose Facility Committee. Section six, public information. All meetings of the Multipurpose Facility Committee shall be conducted in conformance with the Wisconsin Open Meeting Requirements and all information created by or on behalf of the Multipurpose Facility Committee shall be made available as required by the Wisconsin Public Record Law. Section seven, budget. The Multipurpose Facility Committee shall not have any budgetary authority and does not have any funds appropriated to facilitate its purpose. The city council may appropriate such funds as may be necessary for the Multipurpose Facility Committee to fulfill its responsibilities from the contingency fund. Section eight, effective date. That the effects of this resolution shall be in full force after its approval by the city council. Be it further resolved, the city council does hereby authorize the council president to sign this resolution.
You have a motion to approve 16-2-7?
So move.
In a second?
Second.
All right, and discussion? So this is basically the start, or do you want to?
Yeah, this is my proposal. And I attached another document that was used for a different setup of ad hoc committees and it asked a bunch of questions about purpose, rationale, timeframe, those types of things. So if you wanted to add more or reshape this, that's, you're more than welcome to. This is my first shot at it. Assume that even if you approve this one, the council and the committee as disappointed it, would, first meeting should have a study session together to kind of work through the concepts.
Okay. Yeah, this is like the building block. We would have from this, a seven-member plus two councils. You'd have nine people trying to literally look at what are our needs for this center, correct? Okay.
Or was it seven people including the two council members?
No, it's seven people plus two council members.
Okay.
Will we be able to find seven people?
Oh, I'm sure we can.
Don't hide. So is this, is this just nominations or is this like everything else where you kind of fill out an app? And then you send it in that you want to be on this committee?
If you nominate someone, at some point in time, we'll have them fill out an app.
Okay.
But, you know, it's kind of like everything else. If you guys hustle them up here and get them in, we fill out the ad to get them to you and you make the appointments.
Okay, once we have seven.
At a council meeting, they approve them.
Then we bring it forward.
The debate would be which one of you five get, be the two members that are the liaisons.
Okay.
We wouldn't have to appoint all seven at one time. You could appoint four and look for three more.
You could start, get started.
Not necessarily start the meetings, but start building the committee.
Building the ideas.
That's my feeling.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be possible?
You could appoint, over the course of two months, you could appoint one year. Two years, three years. You really need to have the full committee.
Right.
The process. But how you make those appointments, if it takes three months, it takes three months. If it takes six months, it takes six months. Carol may be more motivated the longer it stretches out, but she may start dragging people.
Whatever it takes. I see that, by the way.
Yeah, just tell them.
That's why I asked whether we were able to get seven.
Tell them to call us if they want them.
Yeah, so basically if this goes through, they can call any of us, go to the website, find Carol.
Call the city.
Come to the city.
Get the form.
Get down here, yeah, whatever it takes. And actually, this is not, this is a multi-use facility, so it could be.
It's a broader discussion with the senior center, but I'm sure the senior center would be part of the use.
Yes.
That's going to be discussed. But I hate to say anything that could happen because I don't see the money. I see the money going the other way, but. Based on what I hear coming out of Madison.
So.
Do we need a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 16-27.
I will second it.
In a second? Any further discussion? Call the vote, please. We already did it.
We obviously have a motion.
Oh, we did, and I did it twice. I'm just so thorough.
Well, technically Doug did the second one.
Okay, oh, use the first one.
Use the first one. It does, we like it twice as much. So call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kruhkevich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed, 4-0.
Oh, now we're out of the really cool stuff. Resolution 16-28, authorizing issuance of sale. Let me just see which one this is.
Can I just ask a question before we do that? Do we want to check if they had any information they wanted to tell the council since they came to the meeting? Could we do that?
We can.
Did you have anything you wanted to share with us from, that we didn't hear before?
As far as the long-term.
Yes.
No.
Okay.
I just hope that there will be representation, you know, through the city, from the schools, from the communities, from somebody in business partners.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Nope, not a problem. Do you see?
Do you see the size of the committee workable? Do you need larger, do you want 20, 30, 40?
I don't know.
20, seven's actually big, but that's a.
Nine is a good size.
That's a good size, so. Heather, you ready?
Ready.
Okay. Resolution 16-28, can we just get away with reading like not the whole 49 pages?
Just the title.
Can we do that, please?
You got it. Resolution number 16-28, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $4,500,000 Sewer, Sewerage System and Light and Water Utility Mortgage Revenue Bonds, Series 2016A of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, and providing for the payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bonds.
All right, and is this Jim's arena right here?
Yes, this is Jim's report. He's actually got good news, so.
I like it, you always seem to have good news for us.
We do try.
That's a good thing.
We do try. We did, on your behalf today, conduct a sale, actually two. But this first one, main purpose of the sale of the Sewer Light and Water Revenue Bonds was to refinance the 2009 bonds that the city had outstanding. Also refinance a 2013 bank note that had taken out four projects and then finance a small amount of projects. So the main purpose of the issuance was to refund debt. We took bids this morning for the 13-year term that's remaining on the existing outstanding obligations. We got five bids. Winning bidder was Bosc out of, it's a subsidiary of the Bank of Kansas. They bid with yields that ranged from 0.8% to 2.2%. When we blend that all together, we ended up with a true interest cost of 2.025%. So you're borrowing money for 13 years for just over 2%. It's about 75 basis points less than what we had anticipated in terms of the true interest cost. They, the winning bidder, Bosc, bid with a premium bid, which means they gave you more money than you asked for. And what that allows us to do is it allows us to downsize the issue because the majority of this was for refunding. We just take the money that they give us upfront, we pay down the debt a little bit further. So originally, we were looking at issuing about a little over $4.6 million. We were able to issue only $4.5 million to undertake the projects as well as do the two refinancing. What it ultimately means with the two refundings is that the city will save about $367,000 in future principal and interest payments on the outstanding obligations that you're refunding. That amounts to about $320,000 in terms of a present value savings. We're a bunch of numbers geeks, so we always want to know what a dollar is today versus what it is out in the future, and it's $320,000. The overall financing package came in so that the, we originally estimated the financing for, at $4,610 plus the interest. The results today will also end up with about $320,000 less than what we had originally estimated in terms of what this was going to cost. So all in all, it's a very positive sale. So all in all, it's a very positive sale. We also included in the packet of materials, the rating report. Standard and Poor's did go through the rating process with the city. They affirmed the A-stable rating for the utility. That's what really generated a lot of the interest in being able to sell the debt. So the A-class is very positive in terms of the size of a utility that the city operates. So all in all, great results in the sale. I can go into a lot more detail. I prefer not to unless we actually have the full reading of the resolution because, you know, it would only be fair.
It would only be fair.
I want to note, this is for thirteen years, so we kept it basically on the same term as the original financing.
Exactly.
So it's a lot shorter than what normally would be. We did that to pay it off quicker. But the way it worked out, it was a great savings for us across the board anyway, so we won both ways, shorter term and better.
Yes, yes.
So it was a good deal.
Good deal.
And I would just point out that the resolution does require a roll call vote for the approval.
Okay.
Can I ask, is the seller, I mean, the buyer, financially stable?
Yes. They participate in a lot of bond transactions that we work with, and they are some financial institution and they.
Not fly-by-night.
They are not fly-by-night.
No, that's very big.
Further questions on this one? I have a motion to approve Resolution sixteen dash two eight, second?
Second.
Second. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
All right, and Resolution.
In just a minute, I want to thank everybody who worked on this for your efforts.
Yeah, nice job. You can come and bring one of these back anytime.
Just like that. And one more to go. Resolution sixteen dash two nine, can I have that basically the same length? Can we have that read just?
Resolution sixteen dash two nine, resolution awarding the sale of three million, one hundred, five thousand dollar general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series twenty sixteen B.
All right, and right back to you.
Similarly to the revenue bond sale, we have good results on our general obligation sale. This one is a little bit different than the previous one in that this is financing new projects for two thousand sixteen, primarily street work, some work in both, I think it's TID three and TID four, some improvements at the DPW park facility, and then finishing off the damn work that was started last year. This is being financed over a twenty-year period. We received three bids, so a little lesser on the bid number, and the reason that we ended up with less bids is primarily because the underwriting world right now really appreciates the shorter term rather than a longer term, simply because there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of where interest rates are going to go in the future. But Bosc, subsidiary of Bank of Kansas, again, was the winning bidder. In this case, they bid with a TIC of two point two-three percent with yields ranging from point seven percent to two point seven percent. The reason you have a little, slightly higher TIC is simply because you're going out much longer on the yield curve, you're twenty years instead of thirteen years. It's not as wonderful as the revenue bond, but the end result is that the overall debt service package comes in at about thirty-six thousand dollars less than what we had anticipated in our planning runs. Again, they bid with a premium, so they gave us some additional money. We used that to offset some of the issuance costs. Some of the other issuance costs came in less, and we were able to issue less debt at the end of the day, five million, one hundred and five thousand instead of five million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars as was originally estimated.
What is the rationale behind the companies giving you more than you asked for?
They're, basically, they're hedging that they can put a product in their portfolio that they have a higher interest rate on. So the exchange for giving you more money is that they give you money upfront, and they charge a higher interest rate on the back end. And the reason that they give you the money upfront is that they're hedging that they believe interest rates are going to rise so that they're going to then have this in their portfolio, and their portfolio isn't going to lose money. It is a remarkably counterintuitive way of doing business, but essentially what they're saying is we don't want our portfolio, portfolio to lose value in the future. We'll pay some money upfront so we can hedge our bet in the future that interest rates are going to rise. And so what happens with, when you have a rising interest rate market, the value of somebody's investment is going to go down. So if I had a thousand-dollar bond today in the, at five percent, and the interest rate were to go up to six percent, now all of a sudden, the value of my bond is less than a thousand dollars if I try to sell it on the open market. And so it becomes a little bit less liquid to hold it in my portfolio. That's why they do it.
It's creative thinking.
It is, well.
I mean, it's.
Well, it's, it's creative thinking, and it is, it is done for people that are way out of our income class.
Yeah, right.
Above my pay grade.
How did S and P do on this one?
Oh, I should mention, S and P again affirmed the double A minus stable rating for the city, which again is very positive for a community of the size of the City of Lake Mills. To be in the double A range, you're, you're right where you want to be to have a very attractive debt instrument to put out on the market. There are a couple of cautionary items in there, don't issue too much debt, continue to move forward with the plans, et cetera. But bottom line is, the city's finances are driving the double A rating, and the city's finances are in excellent condition. The city is well-capitalized in terms of having decent reserves. You have managed your growth and development well and have plans into the future of what you're going to be doing, so it's not, you're not flying by the seat of your pants. So all those things put together, puts you in the double A range, which the majority of communities' size of the city probably fall a notch below. So it's, it's something to be very, very pleased with in terms of the rating if the city holds.
Is, are these bonds, I just don't know the correct term, redeemable or calling? Can we call them before at the?
Yes. The, the GO bonds are prepayable after the, I believe, the eighth year, so nine through twenty are callable once you get to the eighth year. On the, the revenue bonds, I believe, were about the same in terms of the call feature. So you're locked in for a number of years, but these interest rates are fixed, so there's no chance that they're going to go up.
Yeah.
You will have the opportunity, if interest rates drop, that you could refund in the future.
It's hard to believe that interest rates are going to get lower than this.
Much more, yeah.
When, when you look at what's happened over the last three weeks, you've timed the market about perfectly, and I would love to be able to stand here and take credit for that.
Please, let's see.
But blind squirrel finds a nut every once in a while.
So in other words, the market's been inching down?
It's been inching down, but as of today, it's leveled off, and it actually just ticked up for the first time in about three weeks. So you've basically hit the market just about perfectly.
Timing is everything.
Yeah.
Somebody up there loves us.
Anything else? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to approve Resolution sixteen dash two nine?
So moved.
Second.
There we go. Can I call the vote, please?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
All right, Resolution sixteen dash three zero, let's see, our snow truck, can we have that one read, please?
Resolution sixteen dash three zero, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer, finance director to transfer funds for snow patrol truck. Whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the twenty sixteen general government budget by ordinance eleven fifty-four, whereas the adopted twenty sixteen general government budget may only be amended by vote of the City Council as provided for under section sixty-five, point nine zero, subsection five, subsection A of Wisconsin statutes, and whereas the City Council has requested that the twenty sixteen general government budget be amended by transferring funds from unreserved fund balance to street capital fund. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, that the general government budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, for the calendar year beginning January one, twenty sixteen, is hereby amended as follows. General fund expenditures, street department, equipment rental, adopted amount is three thousand, the amended amount is two thousand. DPW garage items, adopted amount was five thousand, the amended is four thousand. Capital fund expenditures, street department, the adopted amount was zero, the amended is two thousand. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five, point nine zero, five A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the City Council does hereby authorize the Council President to sign this resolution.
All right, do we have a motion to approve sixteen dash three zero?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions on the down payment?
Well, I just want to comment, if I remember correctly, we got a really good deal on this truck.
Yeah.
And it's one of those things you couldn't predict. You know, if we could have predicted it, we would have put it in the budget, but we didn't know that it was going to become available, so.
And we will get it, right? Down payment, it will be ours, no, nobody else snatched it, so.
Yeah, the way, the way she, we, she worked it out, well, we won't have any problem locking up the truck. And the county's going to work with us.
Fair enough.
They, they have a reason to work with us.
So, yeah. They want their votes done, too.
So did we have to say something about option one in the motion?
No.
Or?
Not in this one.
No, not in this one.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, other questions or a motion, second? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
All right, so that's the truck down payment, and Resolution sixteen thirty-one, can we have that one read, please?
Resolution sixteen dash thirty-one, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer, finance director to transfer funds for DPW service truck. Whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the twenty sixteen general government budget by ordinance eleven fifty-four, whereas the adopted twenty sixteen general government budget may only be amended by vote of the City Council as provided for under section sixty-five, point nine zero, five A of Wisconsin statutes, and whereas the City Council has requested that the twenty sixteen general government budget be amended by transferring funds from unreserved fund balance to street capital fund. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, the general government budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, for the calendar year beginning January one, twenty sixteen, is hereby amended as follows. General fund expenditures, City Council, unreserved fund balance, the adopted amount was two million, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred, the amended amount is two million, seventy-four thousand, four hundred, twelve. Capital fund expenditures, street department, truck, the adopted amount was zero, the amended amount is fourteen thousand, eight hundred, eighty-eight. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five, point nine zero, five A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the City Council does hereby authorize the Council President to sign this resolution.
And we have a motion to approve sixteen dash three one?
So moved. Second.
All right, and discussion on this one? Actually, when would we go pick it up?
It'll be as quickly as they can.
As quickly as they can.
I just want to again express disappointment that this item didn't show up in any shape and form in the budget for the year. Not saying that we would have had the whole thing on, but I think this truck should have been showing up on our, our planned replacement schedule, and it didn't, to my understanding, you know?
No, I think it was in the longer term, you would have seen it in the budget, a couple of years.
But I mean, if it's so bad that it's falling apart, it should have been in earlier.
And when you're, when you're looking at it and you're picking out the pieces of equipment or projects that you want, and you're dividing up what's there, you have to make some tough choices, and sometimes these types of trucks slide down. We have a very strong reserve fund balance, we're not happy about it, but it takes care of these, and they worked really hard to find a good truck at a very low cost, so it made the best of a bad situation.
I've said my piece.
All right, okay. So we had a motion, second. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
No.
Motion passed three one.
All right, Resolution sixteen dash three two, safe drinking water loan, can we have that one read, please?
Resolution sixteen dash three two, authorizing the city manager to be a representative for the safe drinking water loan program and file for the application for said loans. Whereas the City of Lake Mills, a municipal corporation, intends to file an application for state financial assistance through the safe drinking water loan program. And whereas one of the requirements of such an application is that a representative be authorized by formal action of the city to sign and file applications, including amendments and attachments on behalf of the city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, authorizes the city manager to serve as a representative and sign and file said applications and related documents on behalf of the City of Lake Mills, and such representative is further authorized and empowered to do all things necessary in connection with said applications.
All right, and Steve, you want to explain exactly what that is, or?
The program requires that the council designate a person that's authorized to file all the documents on the city's behalf. We are required, if you remember the letter I submitted prior, we got a waiver. Technically, we were supposed to have paperwork in in October of last year. We filed for a waiver. We now have to have these documents in by June thirtieth, so what this does is allow me to file all the grant paperwork by June thirtieth.
Make a motion to approve Resolution sixteen thirty-two.
In a second?
Second.
All right, call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
All right, and ordinance eleven sixty-five, third reading, can we have that one read, please?
Ordinance eleven sixty-five, amending comprehensive plan, future land use map number six. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, pursuant to Wisconsin stats, sixty-six point one zero zero one, four, the City of Lake Mills is authorized to amend its comprehensive plan, which was adopted on February seventeenth, two thousand nine. Section two, the Plan Commission held a public hearing on the proposed comprehensive plan amendment on April twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen, and recommended to the council approval of the amendment. Section three, the amendment to the comprehensive plan is to the future land use map, and the properties affected by the proposed amendment to the plan are parcels two four six zero seven one three two four two two zero one three, two four six zero seven one three two four two one zero zero one, two four six zero seven one three two four two four zero zero two, two four six zero seven one three two four one two zero zero one, and two four six zero seven one three two four one two zero zero five. Section four, the ordinance modifies map six, future land use map from community institutional facilities, planned neighborhood and environmental corridor to plan industrial for these five parcels, which are generally located along South Main Street, north of Unshaven Lane, and along the Glacier Drummond Trail. Section five, the proposed and current land use maps at that location are attached to this ordinance and incorporated herein, with the proposed land use map being adopted as amendment to future land use map six through enactment of this ordinance. Section six, this ordinance shall take effect upon, effect upon passage and publication as required by law.
And we have a motion to adopt ordinance eleven sixty-five?
It's gonna move.
In a second?
Second.
All right, and any discussion?
We've talked about this one quite a bit. We've talked about this one quite a bit, so...
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Krukevich?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
And ordinance 1166, can we have a third reading? Can we have that one read, please?
Ordinance 1166, an ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. The city council of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin does ordain as follows. Section 1, territory annexed. In accordance with state statute 66.0217, Wisconsin statutes, and the attached and incorporated by reference petition for direct annexation filed with the city clerk on April 27, 2016, signed by the owners and electors of the properties proposed to be annexed, and the legal description therefore, which was amended on May 11, 2016, the following territory in the town of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, is annexed into the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Section 2, effective annexation from and after the date of this ordinance, the territory described in section 1 and is shown in the amended legal description and map dated May 11, 2016, shall be part of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, for any and all purposes provided by law, and all persons coming or residing within such territory shall be subject to all ordinances, rules, and regulations governing the city of Lake Mills. Section 3, ward designation. The territory described in section 1 of this ordinance is hereby made a part of the first ward of the city of Lake Mills, subject to the ordinances, rules, and regulations of the city of Lake Mills governing wards. Section 4, severability. If any provision of this ordinance is invalid or unconstitutional, such invalidity or unconstitutionality shall not affect the other provisions or applications of this ordinance that can be given effect without the invalid or unconstitutional provision of application. Section 5, effective date. This ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
All right. And we have a motion to adopt 1166.
Steve, we haven't got the state report back yet because we had to do a legal description correction, and so what we'd like to do is table this until we get the state report.
Okay.
Eric has been working with us, but we had...
When do you see that coming?
The attorney, Mr. Rumpf, had to amend the legal description, and he was on vacation for quite a while, and so it got filed just recently, and so we need to let Eric get his report back to us. Eric is the DOA representative who determines whether it's in the public interest or not.
Okay.
So, we need to, if we can just get this tabled and hold it until we get that.
I will make a motion to table till we get the report back.
All right.
I will second it.
Second, and that's, call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Krukevich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
All right, and we'll do that. Ordinance 1167, second reading, can we just have the title read, please?
Ordinance 1167, amending parks board membership.
And then, just discussion, I did bring it up at the last parks board meeting, had it on the agenda. Apparently, there were seven members at one time. Biggest issues they had were they only had six members showing up for a long period of time, and real problem making quorum, missed a lot of meetings or had to skip them. And then, the second problem was, a lot of people would fill that seventh seat, but they would have a single agenda item in mind, and so they'd come to the meeting, worry about the one tree or sidewalk they were worried about, and then you'd never see them again. So, those were the two issues, I think, that history had it with seven members. And then, I think in the last five years with five members, one meeting has been canceled due to quorum. So, other than that, every meeting's gone off the schedule. So, that was our discussion. No recommendation, we just kind of held a discussion to see, and we just wanted to pass that on, so...
I had something.
Moves to the next meeting.
So, how many folks are up for, I guess?
Two will be up next year.
Next year, 2017?
I believe so, yeah.
But we don't know whether they will want to be reappointed.
And I did not ask if they would or not, you know? We just had the discussion on what happened with seven, and now, so...
What normally happens, or have we ever had the situation happen where someone asked to be placed back on it, but then you have new folks show up? Yeah, has that ever occurred?
It has occurred back quite a long time ago, but I don't think in recent years that has occurred.
It hasn't occurred as long as I've been here. It's usually been the other way.
It's usually been, we don't have people...
We've had people who wanted to leave, and we've kind of...
No one to fill them.
Strong argument in staying on because there was no one else to go on. But historically, that's up to the council president, to which one he's going to recommend, and then the council has to confirm, so... But in the 16 years I've been here, it's always been the reappointment, and then we've usually had to struggle to find people to replace them. So, you know, like Steve mentioned, the parks board went for quite a while with only six members. Plan commission went for a while with only six members. Parks board dropped to five because they had a real issue maintaining seven members. We just, we had a hard time getting people willing to serve that would show up on a regular basis.
The things that, I guess, would concern me as an individual if I wanted to join something, if my name was put up there, only the city council president would recommend one of the other people, would the rest of the council members even know that there was more people that tried to get that position?
We historically, as a staff, would have passed all the applications along. That is not to say that there hasn't been an effort to make it so that it wasn't as obvious that there'd been multiple supply.
Yeah, exactly.
Because, you know, they may have dragged out the application process along that others withdrew.
Could that be something that we modify in the future? Is that something that's...
We see all applications, because I know the ones, there were three that came by with parks on them, but that was full, and those folks ended up somewhere else.
Yeah.
Well, that would be an internal housekeeping thing that the council could certainly take up. It's not spelled out in your rules or in the statutes, that the council president, in our code, in the statutes, is the one who makes the appointments, but the nuts and bolts about who gets to see the applications and stuff is not spelled out anywhere. So, if you wanted to prescribe a certain method for those to be handled, you could certainly do it by just asking to do a resolution, and if the majority of the council agree, well, then that becomes the new procedure, as long as the council president is the one who's making the appointment.
Sure. Okay. I'm just trying to think of all things.
And I would say this, I don't want to speak for anybody on the parks board, but I do believe one member has served a long time and is probably not going to re-up for sure, so...
I want to comment that sometimes people apply for one thing because they know there's an opening there, but sometimes we look at their qualifications when they apply for that, and we go, you know, holy cow, this person's really got good qualifications for some other committee. We just had that happen on the EDC. Our new member, I think, applied for the planning commission, and when whoever looked at it, looked at it, they got her on the EDC, and she's fabulous on the EDC. We are, but she didn't apply for the EDC. I don't even know if she knew it.
She listed it as number two.
Okay. Well, anyway, the point is, is, you know, someone could say, well, we didn't give her her first choice. She is a real asset to the EDC, way bigger than she would be probably at the planning commission.
Sure.
So, I just wanted to mention that...
Well, it may have been her second choice, but she was more qualified to be there, and we had a need, so...
She's fantastic.
Well, her background is, we cover both extremely well. I wouldn't say that she wouldn't have been as big of an asset to the planning commission.
No, I didn't say that, I'm just saying...
I didn't. I said that. I said she may have been a better, you know...
But the overall blend that we ended up with is, you know, we get you on into where we need you over a period of time. If you continue to say, I'm interested in another committee, generally, you get moved over. That's happened. That's happened. You know, we have people on the public works board that wanted to be on the plan commission. Eventually, they ended up on the plan commission, and, you know, parks board to the public works board. So, if we get you in and we get you serving, and you continue to want that other one, it's pretty, it's not that difficult to move over.
And I just want to say this, if you want to be on the parks board because you think the whole thing is figuring out where to plant trees, and everyone comes in and sings kumbaya, it's probably not what place you want to be.
You have softballs ending up in the wrong place.
We have, yes, disputes that we have, and I think Diane could attest to that, we have to referee some things, and so...
Sometimes things that you would never dream about to be handled on a parks board come to the parks board, and I think everybody in the parks board gets surprised from time to time.
I think so, too.
Interesting board.
Any other discussion, or, okay, so the ordinance 1167, we'll go to the third reading, and recommendations for future agendas?
Well, let's discuss first the next meeting. It's July 5th, and I anticipate that if you're not on vacation, you're going to be recovering from vacation.
Well, I just told Mike, I said, actually, if, for me, Monday is an off day, so that Tuesday, we'll be doing Monday's work and most of Tuesdays, so I'm not sure what time I'll be here, but where are you headed? I like what you're thinking, maybe.
Yeah, I was thinking that we might have a July 5th meeting. We've already been kind of telling all our people that July 19th is the date that we're shooting for.
So, we would just have the one in July?
Just the one in July.
Time with me.
We don't have anything that has to happen.
Kind of disappointed, but...
No. I don't think of it either. We don't have anything that, we don't have anything that we know of right now that needs to be done on that date.
That must be, so, okay.
I don't have an objection.
I don't either, whatever.
So, we're good with that, so we'll skip the first one, and...
And then, for the next agenda, we had two issues at Economic Development Commission that will be coming forward to revolving loan funds.
Okay.
So, we will get our revolving loan money out.
Nice.
And then, we have a retirement, that we'll have a resolution for that.
Okay.
We had a couple other items. We have some things coming out of plan commission that I anticipate being here. What was the other item that we had on there? Well, anyways, I know that we'll have, on the 19th, we'll have about six things.
So, the next meeting will be July 19th? Anything else?
We may be doing my performance evaluation, one of my trimester performance evaluations that evening.
That was the date, wasn't it? I believe so. Okay. Either that or August, but I thought it was for that.
So, possibly.
Whenever it was, I talked to Misty, and she knows, and she's the one who puts together the agendas. Yeah.
Anything else?
So, for the people watching on TV, don't look for us on the 5th of July. There won't be any program.
None here, so, anything else? We're adjourned. Perfect.